I call to order the Gladstone City Council Work Session for August 23rd, 2022 at 5:30 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person in our council chambers, as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally, and public comment is not part of our agenda and is not allowed. Attendees will not be able to speak during this work session. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience, nor business from the council. We have two items on our agenda this evening. Childcare for All, CC4A, Task Force Presentation, and the National Opioid Settlement Agreement Substance Use and Overdose Prevention Initiative. Tammy, could you please call the role?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Could everyone stand up for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, back to Administrator Betts.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have two items tonight for you to learn a little bit about some programs that are going on in Clackamas County. So the first one, we have Bridget Daisy and Dani Stam-Thomas, who are going to come up and talk to you about the Childcare for All, CC4A Task Force, that they have been participating in for the last year. You can follow along on your dais or in your packet. There's a copy of the presentation that they're going to go through.
It's like our PowerPoints being queued. We'll introduce ourselves. My name is Bridget Daisy, I use she/her pronouns, the Executive Director of Clackamas Workforce Partnership, or the local workforce development board that serves Clackamas County.
Dani Stam-Thomas, she/her pronouns. I am the Early Learning Hub Director for Clackamas County.
Thank you so much, councilors, for letting us come and talk to you tonight. And we're hoping that this is more of a conversation. So we'll spend hopefully the first 10 to 15 minutes just sharing some information about what we embarked on a little less than a year ago and where we are now, what we plan to do moving forward. Oh, there we go. Sorry. All right. So workforce issues are a hot-button topic right now as we're in the midst of recovering from this last couple of years of economic downturn. And an additional topic that is coming up pretty regularly and its impact on the workforce and the economy is childcare, early learning, and education. I am in awe of what women have to juggle on a day-to-day basis as they're caring for children, sometimes parents, other family members, while they're trying to work or attend school and would support their family. Being told how to be, show up, conduct themselves, parent, or even wear their hair, among other contradictions that exist within our society. The workplace is not currently built for women. And so one way to counteract that is to have open dialogues and conversations about what is it going to take for our workforce to feel supported and be able to excel and accelerate in their career paths and journey. This past few years of the crisis has been most felt by women. Public health is in a bit of a crisis right now. We have environmental and economic downturns and crises. Women are about 50% of the population, but certainly not 50% of the workers in industries like manufacturing, technology, construction. There are programs nationally to change this with little results, and we're working on some things locally for those specific industries. Women do make up large portions of our care industry and other female-dominated occupations. 95% of the workforce in early learning and childcare is made up of women. The issues for Black and Brown women are exacerbated by these crises and have been. If somebody has disabilities or a background issue or are members of the LGBTQIA+ population, we know that they might face unnecessary hurdles in going back to work or trying to excel in their field. How children develop and are taken care of impacts their lifelong success. And so when we talk about the future of work within my organization as a workforce development board, we're talking about taking care of children because in the next 20 years, they are future workers, employers, creators, ideators, and inventors.
So you have some graphs in the PowerPoint in your packet. The important thing to note about all of this is essentially that pretty much all of Oregon is a childcare desert. That means that there is less than one licensed childcare slot for every three children in our state. It means there's a lot of competition for slots. That number is even higher when you're talking about children who are under three. For Clackamas County specifically, you are looking at one slot for every 11 children under three. Okay. That got worse during the pandemic. We had many programs have to close due to increasing costs, increasing needs for care, stress, difficulty meeting the regulations. At the end of 2020, we had 61,346 children here in Clackamas County. That number is approximately the same, perhaps a little bit more now. We had 1,849 slots in family childcare and over 8,000 in childcare centers. Even with those numbers, only 16% of children in Clackamas County have access to a viable childcare option. That leaves many parents and children without access to the care that they need to sustain their family. It also leaves a lot of children without access to the kindergarten readiness programming that they need to be successful in kindergarten and eventually for future workers. Since the pandemic, we've lost about 10% of the childcare in Clackamas County when we already didn't have enough, including losing more than 1,200 childcare slots in the last two years. This is not new information. Lack of childcare is something we've been talking about for several years. It's been exacerbated by the issues created from the pandemic and the inflation and all of the things that are facing our economy and our the American family today. Back in October of last year, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners had a childcare town hall where they heard from more than 60 members of the community who said that childcare was a key issue affecting their family and that inability to find that was affecting their ability to prosper at work, take promotions, work full-time, and provide for their children.
Childcare is a multi-dimensional issue. In addition to thinking about it in terms of parents and making sure that they have access to it, whether they work during a daytime, they work a day shift, they swing shift, or weekend care. We know that there are especially challenges for evening and weekend care. A lot of families have to depend on family members, and that may or may not be the best situation or environment for the child to be able to grow and develop. We have affordability issues within the childcare desert. Families can't afford it, and we know that providers are only able to pay maybe a little over minimum wage in order to keep staff. And so especially in tight labor markets like we are in right now, it's going to be extraordinarily hard for us to recruit new teachers into this industry. This is an absolute equity issue. What is available for someone who can afford childcare or a nanny or some other, or a family member to stay home and take care of their child? That's not available to over 50% of our population. And if we are going to recover from this last couple of years economically, that means we're going to have to think differently about how we support working parents and families. So last year, and this again to Dani's point, we've been talking about this for several years within the workforce board and system, as well as the Early Learning Hub and other partners in the Clackamas area. This last year, we launched what we now call the Childcare for All Task Force. And this was our approach at saying, what does a community-built, driven solution look like? And how do we engage as many partners and community members in this conversation around universal childcare? Or how do we get to universal childcare?
Currently, how do we get to our next slide?
Yes. There we go. So we set out to do this, and the lead organizers of this task force included Clackamas County Early Learning Hub, which is a division, there's a division in Health, Housing, and Human Services known as Children, Family, and Community Connections, which houses the Early Learning Hub, the Childcare Resource and Referral out of the Clackamas Education Service District, and Clackamas Workforce Partnership. And our goals are on this slide, really. We needed to elevate the issue of childcare. There's a lot of people who may not understand the issues that families are facing and what young parents need in order to thrive in the economy in 2022. We needed to identify solutions, but not just solutions that made sense for a few people, but made sense for everyone. So we knew that there is going to be, again, a multi-colaborative response to it. We began committees to focus on the key issues that are facing childcare, and we'll talk a little bit about those in a moment. Develop an action plan and study the problem, and then create the largest network. And our goal is to ensure that Clackamas County's voice is heard at the county, the regional, the state, and the federal level to say children are important to this community. And in order to take care of our children, we need to come together. We need to come up with smart solutions.
So for Clackamas County, what we're looking at is more than 420,000 residents. Of that, more than 64,000 are children six weeks to 12 years. Those are all children whose families potentially need childcare to be able to work and live. In that, 68% of those are family households. So there is the age spread there in that graph. Very interesting. Of course, there are many more school ages from six to 12. So that group looks a bit larger. But I want to point out to you how many infants and toddlers there are. That is children who are under the age of three. That's one of the biggest populations we have in Clackamas County and the hardest to serve. It's the most expensive, and the ratios are the smallest. So we need the most educated, the most quality, and the most amount of staff to be able to provide that care. In our process through the task force, we started doing a lot of data digging. We contracted with a group called Marant MacLeod to do some facilitation and uncover information how childcare relates to the economy, how childcare works for businesses, how it affects families and all of the systems that we work in. So in this first phase, we've been developing some early recommendations, where groups have been working on some initial recommendations that they present to the steering committee. So we've gotten through that phase and actually also through round two, where we're currently revising some of those initial recommendations for what they actually are going to look like for public consumption and thinking about what we can do moving forward, how we are going to bring some of that work forward in Clackamas County that will lead us to a final set of recommendations to give to folks like you.
And I would add too that the recommendations are going to be in development and more dynamic because once we have some ideas, we need to vet that with the community and to continue to ask the community, does this resonate? Does this fit with what you're feeling or experiencing within your family? And how can we adjust the recommendations to make sure that every voice is heard? And I would say too that where we started and where we are now was not exactly where we expected to be. So over the course of the last year, we did very much work with other partners like Clackamas Community College, some cities like Estacada and Canby, Family Forward Oregon, the Children's Institute, Oregon City, Toros Juntos. Just recently, PGE signed on as a partner because the mere fact of doing this as a community means that we're going to keep coming back together until we find the solutions. We knew when we started the task force that we weren't going to solve all the problems by the time the task force was coming to an end in the first six to 10 months. But where we are now, we're a lot farther. We've developed a lot of support, and that support's growing. We're hoping Gladstone becomes one of those supporters.
Yeah, so we had four work groups who were working on different topics related to childcare. One of those was finance and strategy to really uncover what does it cost to provide care for children? And what does that look like in a business model? What kind of economies of scale do we have to develop to really serve at least a third of the children in Clackamas County to make sure that there's enough supply here for families to have access? What are the expenditures? What are the revenue options? How would we pay for such a thing? Infrastructure really looks at the geography of Clackamas County. As you know, it's quite large and has many very different communities in it. How are we addressing that in our solutions? What current facilities do we have? How many future facilities do we need? And what do those look like? What kind of zoning and regulations apply to those sort of facilities? And are there barriers that providers will have in certain areas to setting up such places? Program and policy, where group is looking at alignment and implementation pathways, training and policies for programming, developing the workforce, which also relates to the next thing, and having equity and cultures represented in the workforce who are working with our children. We know that our children under five are the most diverse group we have in Clackamas County, and the workforce that supports them needs to mirror that. And then, of course, wages is a significant issue, as Bridget told you. Paying a teacher a living wage in early childhood is very difficult.
And just to make a finer point to that, an individual that works in childcare, the average wage is $17.54 in Clackamas County. Based on MIT or self-sufficiency standards, an individual who has one child needs to make no less than $72,000 a year in order to be able to survive in this area without public subsidy. So that means in order to pay for rent or housing, food, insurance, other childcare expenses. So we know that somebody who works in this industry can't even afford to put their children in this industry because of that divide. And so what this slide is also saying is that, you know, one adult household versus two adult households are disadvantaged in different ways because, again, we have one person who's bringing home the income in order to support the family. We know that based on national and international studies that the return on investment is very high when we invest in children and prevention. So for every dollar spent on childhood education, we expect to see no less than $6 back into the community and recouped. We've seen studies go as high as $1 in $12. So for every dollar that we put in a childcare or educational programming for children, we might see, you know, again, between $6 and $12 recouped. And it comes in the form of reductions in criminal offenses or engagement with law enforcement. It will reduce the number of individuals that are needing special education or accommodations based on a disability or an intellectual disability or mental health issue. And investing in childcare is not only good for kids, it's good for parents. It's good for morale. When parents know that their children are safe, they can go to work and they can feel good, like I'm leaving my children with someone who loves my kids and it's going to take care of them. And so there's really strong evidence to support, you know, smart solutions as early as possible. As soon as someone is born, they begin learning. And so we want to make sure that we nurture every single second of someone's development because, again, that's our collective future. And the future looks bright. So again, you know, I shared a few of the areas, but we will be able to see increased labor force participation across our community as childcare becomes more widely available. We'll reduce that duration on unemployment. People who need to train, you know, the other industries that impact our economy, healthcare, construction, technology, manufacturing, they all need workers. And we regularly talk to businesses and employers that are saying, we're struggling with finding people. And one of the reasons they're struggling with finding people is because of the lack of care. And it's not just childcare, but adult care because we have an aging population and a lot of people are taking... This conversation is about childcare. But I would say that there is a huge need for the care industry to have more attention paid to it. And so our recommendations, and we could change the word recommendations or asks of you, are really, you know, ask us questions, engage with the task force. At this point, we will most likely be moving to more of a coalition because it will be more long-term in nature. Follow us or connect with us on social media. We have a more active communications plan that's being developed, and it will be coming out more regularly monthly. Guest write, share your thoughts, again, your voices, along with all of our task force members and other community members that we haven't had a chance to connect with. We need to hear from everyone because, again, what works for one family isn't going to work for another. And so we need to be able to hear that so our solutions are capturing all of that. And then believe that this change is possible because without it, well, I don't want to think about what happens without it because I hear a lot of soundbites that say our children are the most important thing in our community, and we need to support them in their development. And so we'll stop there and entertain any questions or thoughts or comments that you might have about this. And we're excited to have this conversation with you.
Well, thank you so much for coming to us and letting us know everything that you're doing. We're going to go with questions from people here, and we are going to start with Counselor Tracy Todd.
Oh, I don't have any questions right now, but I find this very exciting. You know, my kids are now 29 and 30. But I was going to school, I was working, had a working husband also that worked many, many hours. And I think of if I didn't have such an amazing community of friends that I could drop my kids off and then I'd watch their kids while they went to work. But it was always very stressful. It was always every day trying to figure that out. And we're just in a time where this needs to be focused on, and it shouldn't be stressful to go to work by just going to work, you know, trying to make sure that your kids are safe. It does weigh heavily, and I just appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
I was just thinking about the one part you were talking about. Do you guys offer any incentives for the under three? I mean, to get more childcare, you say that's where you're lacking. Do you have a program or a plan to get more people involved in that? So you're not lacking as much?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. In the state of Oregon, the Early Learning Division, about three years ago, instituted a program called Baby Promise, which is supposed to support and incentivize providers to do that. It has not expanded to Clackamas County yet. They are still in the pilot stages of figuring out how that works on a larger scale. So we are hopeful that at some point, we can implement that program here with some funding from the Legislature and the Early Learning Division, which is becoming the Department of Early Learning and Care. So in Clackamas County, we do have a small amount of what is called early headstart slots. So those support low-income families or families who are at risk for potentially having child welfare involvement down the road. It supports them in having some childcare, but it's also home visiting and a lot of other things tied in there with the prevention. So there are not specific programs at this moment, and we are trying to figure out what sort of solutions there would be for the under three.
That'd be important, probably, to help. And then the other, so you've got City of Canby, City of Oregon City. You went and talked to them, and then I would ask Jackie, I guess, this one. So what do we then decide if we want to be a part of this coalition? Is that how that works?
Yeah, and in those situations, like for Oregon City, the city council had approved last year that childcare and workforce were going to be areas that they wanted to focus ARPA funds on and also, you know, kind of dig into the issue because they saw it as such a critical need. And so Oregon City developed a childcare work group or committee, and then also a workforce one. So they're doing some innovative things with their federal dollars and saw it as a real parallel to their existing work to sign on to the task force. City of Canby, we have mostly been connecting with economic development to talk about the areas or why childcare is an economic development issue because most of the providers that operate are small business owners. We do have some nonprofits, but they're not public schools. There are a lot of people who either they have a business working out of their home or they have a center or some other facility available. So it's absolutely a small business economic development issue. And because it's more of a horizontal that serves all industries, we saw that as a real complementary place to start having conversations. So through their Economic Development Department and their city manager, they decided to sign on and become more active in the task force. And then we've also presented to the City of Malala. We've had conversations with West Lynn. We should be presenting with them next month. But the idea is that this is an all-hands-on-deck type of issue. So we hope to engage in more of these conversations with other electives around the community as well as businesses and community partners.
Well, thank you. No, it's important and it's needed. So I appreciate you tackling this, and thanks for your time.
Counselor Garlington, if I could ask one clarifying question. So what does it specifically mean to sign in as a partner? Is that a financial contribution? Or are you specifically talking about the recommendations that you showed at the end of your slide? I think that's really what will become the focus of a conversation, not tonight, but whether or not the elected officials want to allocate ARPA funds. Where would that really go if they were to choose to financially contribute?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So signing on can look different. It looks different for all of our partners. Signing on could just be that the City of Gladstone supports the study and the work and then participates as staff that's available or as councilors are available to connect with the projects, funding it, the funds. So this was started with no special pot of dollars. We're not grant-funded to do this work. I mean, of course, we do workforce development work, and Dani's focused on early learning. But to really like take this issue on at this scale is not something that we're funded to do. So any additional dollars we're able to get goes to Marant MacLeod for the study that they've been doing. Right now, we're filling that with some future-ready funds that the state of Oregon had funded to workforce issues and solving through innovative solutions. And then in this next phase, it's kind of, we're not exactly, you know, depending on how much we're able to attract. I know we're going to be doing a lot of grant writing, and we're going to be appealing to our business community and other community partners on what an investment looks like. But again, I think it's whatever the community or organization or individual feels most comfortable with. We'll take all the help that we can get. And I would say we're not really looking for the least of what anyone can do, but the most of what anyone can do because, again, this is such an important issue.
Counselor Hartman?
I don't have any questions, more comments. It has been a pleasure to serve over the past year with you all, and I appreciate this task force that you've put together. It's been so thoughtful and being able to include all of the different categories. How much does it start? Infrastructure, zoning, how much do people get paid? All of those things I think we often forget about. As a parent of two who can't afford childcare, it is extremely important. I think last I looked at childcare, it would be $2,800 a month for me to have my kids go full-time, and I work full-time. So it is important, and I love that you touch on the economic aspect of it and we will see those benefits in five years, 10 years, 20 years. So I just have appreciated the thoughtfulness and working with you and, and I will continue to support your efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy.
Thank you for the presentation. There's a lot here really to, to, to think about. But I, I kind of see the direction, but I have to ask the question like what, what is your, what's your perfect model? And I mean, really, what, what do you look at? If you were to look at this and you're to think to yourself, it could be a number of businesses who could put together a coalition of, of childcare. And I know that there's some European models that are similar to that, where you've got major corporations that have put together a childcare center. They're not necessarily competing corporations. They contribute so that their workers can work, you know, long hours like a lot of folks do and that the kids are, are protected and taken care of. Like what are we, what are we really looking for here? Cause I, I like it. I'm just, it's always when we talk about money and the wondering where the pot of money is coming from and what it really means. Like what is the input you need from both the public sector and potentially the private sector? Frankly, I think the private sector is probably going to have to pick up the, the ball on this one soon.
Well, we definitely think that it's a, it's a multi-pronged, it's a multi-pronged approach. There's not going to be one solution that solves this issue. And so it's going to be continued public subsidization, which currently exists, but certainly isn't enough. It's going to be an employer benefit, which is starting to become more popular as individuals, or as employers and businesses are starting, or wanting to attract more people into their, into their jobs. We're not saying that it's not, that it's completely free to the, to the community, but it should be within reason. And the, the amount is 7% of someone's income. And we certainly know that it's above that for a lot of our population. And so we, we anticipate that there's going to be, there's a lot, there's a lot of solutions that are going to get us to the 100% or what's available. And then we also have a lot of families that may not be interested in childcare. And so maybe it's not the 64,000 children that we really need to serve. And the more we engage with community members and families, it turns out to be more like 40,000 or 30,000. We still want to be able to respond to those that are, are needing something different. And so I know I have lots of ideas and thoughts of where we could go with it. But I do believe that it's going to be, it's going to need to be a public, private, public, private partnership. And, and it, it will, it will not, not cost money. There will be a substantial investment, I think, on the front end. But it will again, pay for itself that in time we'll start to see those, those benefits in, in various ways. And I think that, I think that that's, that's worth, worth investing and celebrating.
And from us, you know, you want the support, but also it sounds to me like you want somebody to kind of continue to, to push, like the cities, like give you the support, but also kind of be in your, in your court and, and push you along on this journey as you guys, I mean, it's obvious that there's a lot of unanswered questions going into round two, round three, right? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around this because in this country, we have completely devalued education to the point where we now have teachers who are stepping up and telling you why they don't want to continue on their chosen career path. And I, I did notice early in my life or earlier in my life that with childcare, it was just the Wild West with regards to valuation on whether or not it was important. And it doesn't make sense to me. It never has. So I mean, I'm always asking this because I've seen these, I've seen not that this presentation, but I've seen other presentations where we're talking about tackling childcare. And I'm not ever sure exactly what somebody wants when we want to take this on as an issue. And I don't want to, I'm not trying to play a game of gotcha because there's a lot of information here. There's probably a lot of information in the report. I think recognizing the value is going to be the biggest thing when you go out to the community. We have to convince our communities that education is valuable.
Yeah, yeah. This is a big lift, no doubt. And again, we know that this is, we're in it for the long haul.
Sure.
And to ensure that we, we can serve as many children as possible. And like for, so just to tell you a couple of what we consider success stories, since we started working together over the last few years. As a result of some conversations with childcare providers, we heard that there were some cities or communities that had codes, business codes or building codes that got in the way of them either growing their business or expanding their business. And so by connecting with the economic development and being able to talk about it from like a business sense and, and describe, you know, what these employers or these service providers were facing, we're able to shift, to change city code in Happy Valley, which then would, that which allowed then for more slots to be open. So, so that's like, that's one, that's one thing, that's one thing that we were able to do that increased slots even by a few in that community. In other, in other places, it's just been a matter of people knowing that this is of, this is a topic of interest and there's investors that want to invest in smart solutions. And so there's an investor that just invested in a new center in the Oregon City area as a result of all of these relationships that have been built. And they've been recognizing that this is going to be a really favorable and friendly area for them to be setting up shops. So, so, so much of this is going to be, we're building it as we go. You know, we launched this ship out into the, into the water without it being fully built. But with connections like the city has with its community, to its businesses, you can help to open doors and say, is this a topic that you're talking about? The city of Wilsonville just put out a survey to its employer community and to its parent and to its families. And it receives sizable response back about like, is childcare an issue for you? Is this something that you're needing some support with? How old are your children? What does that look like? What kind of care are you looking for? And, and what I've heard back, because I haven't seen the numbers yet, but hopefully we'll be seeing that in the next week or so, is that it is a compelling argument or it's that there's a compelling case to be made. And if we could do surveys like that across every city or community in Clackamas County, that in and of itself says to the community, we, we care about this issue. We, we want to talk about it. We want to solve it. And though we don't have all of the answers today or all of the money to make it happen, we're working our way towards making, making it a thing.
So the two examples that you gave are exactly where I was trying to go with my question. And then going back to the investment example, I think, you know, it seems to me like there could be a guaranteed rate of return. I know this is unbelievable that I would say this. I mean, I think 15 to 20% rate of return. A lot of people want to be 1,000% profit in this day and age. It's ridiculous. When I was in business school, it was 40% profit. That's what we formulated everything, right? So you can get a set rate of return. It's actually not a bad investment. So as many of, you know, any of the equity investors or anybody like that that you can get involved with, that are outside of wanting the 1,000% profit and, you know, don't see the long, or do see the long vision. It sounds to me like a good business practice. My sister did this when she was raising her two boys and it was a good business practice for her. She got to raise her two boys herself and she raised another five kids or she cared for another five or six kids in the process. And it paid for itself and gave a little bit of a return. So it's like, it doesn't take a whole bunch of imagination to figure that out. And I'm glad to hear that there are some investors who are, who are looking at the model. Again, you know, 9% to 20% rate of return, that used to be a good profit for a lot of people. So I'm hoping you find some folks that are interested in that. Thank you for the presentation. It was really thorough. Thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions. Thanks.
So I just have a couple of questions, piggybacking on what Counselor Tracy had to say. What, where, how are you looking at, this is how many centers we want to build in X amount of years and in what communities? Or right now, are you just looking for a list of cities to back you? So as you go back to the state and say, hey, look, we, we have backing and we, we need money just to move ideas forward?
Yeah, I'm going to answer that a couple of different ways. Where we started was, was to do a research study and really like, what is the, what would the true cost of universal care be? And so that's really what we're developing right now is what that full cost will be with all of the considerations like facilities, like transportation, like increasing wages and benefits to the workers. And what does prof, or professional or workforce development look like into the industry? So there's, so there's a, there's a price tag for this, like this big number. And the idea is that there is going to be a gap that we're not able to fill with some, you know, with the subsidized that's existing or with what parents, if parents pay 7%. So whatever that is, is a much smaller number than the big hole. And so as, as we end this initial study that says, hey, there's this big number attached to doing this, then it's going to be, then it's again, engaging the community and having more conversations and, and working through and actually creating more action steps to solve these issues at the, the most local level all the way up. What I would also say and how I would answer that is last year or two years ago, preschool for all prom, or preschool for all passed in Multloma County. And preschool for all was really a catalyst in our, in, for this conversation. Cause then we heard that Washington County was exploring a preschool for all ballot measure. Preschool for all again is only Multloma County and it's only ages three and four. We knew that as they started ramping up the need for slots, they were going to ramp up the need for their workers and early learning teachers. And that, that meant that we might lose teachers in the Clackamas area because they would be making more money with the preschool for all ballot measure. The reason I say all of that is we can't have one-off solutions. So this is not something that Clackamas County is going to be able to solve all on its own or the city of Gladstone all on its own, or, or the metro area all on its own. There really does need to be, you know, city solutions, county solutions, regional solutions, state solutions, federal solutions. And we believe that if we can create a loud enough voice in Clackamas County that we can start to tip that scale in a direction that, that creates greater investment from the federals all the way down. So I do think that there is going to be, there's going to be lots of ways for us to combat this issue, like starting apprenticeship programs for early learning teachers, making sure that our career pathways are more clearly articulated. Trying to increase the wages or increase the benefits through public subsidy or investments through the pub, private sector. All of, all area, all, all possibilities are on the table right now. We just want to, we want to start implementing those and start testing them in the Clackamas area in partnership with community so that, so that we can start to really tackle this issue together.
So my, my second question is my children are a bit older than Counselor Todd's children. But the problem I had when my children were younger is the same problem that people have today. You got a kindergartner who's in school part-time. It's not as long as you're at work. You got to find somebody to get your kids to school. You got to find somebody to get your kids home from school. And you got to find somebody to watch until you get home. That is a working mother's nightmare. And in 25 years, why has that not been fixed? What is wrong with our school system?
This is one of the reasons that here in Clackamas County specifically, we did not focus on preschool. We are focused on all of the ages. Preschool is important. You would never hear me say that it's not, but it is not our biggest problem in Clackamas County. Our biggest problem is infants and toddlers and what you just suggested. And it's becoming more of a problem as some of our school districts decide on alternative schedules, take off Fridays or half days on Wednesdays. That just throws more challenges to the moms who are trying to schedule care and go to work and manage all of those things. And if you have a child who also happens to be in preschool, on top of all of that, it's very stressful. There is certainly a place at our table for school districts to plug in and say, this is what our community is struggling with here at our homeschool. This is how many after-school slots we have. How can you help us expand that? What can we look at? What sort of service providers are willing to do that? What facilities are available and how do we increase that? Because we know that school age is a really big struggle and there's a very limited amount available.
Yeah, I think I had more availability when my kids were small than when we went to, when I had them in school. That was a huge struggle for us. And I guess I just don't understand why our school districts, who have these, you know, large budgets, why we're not utilizing the same buildings that are already open with people that are already there, you know, and that kind of thing. And it, it seems to me that if you take care of the, the school age kids within the district, it would open up more spots for home care and other facility care for this younger, more vulnerable population. So I think in my mind, I'm thinking, why aren't we pushing our school districts?
I will say that through this effort, we actually have been pushing our school districts a little bit to really consider what it, how, what they do affects what childcare needs families have and how they might respond to that situation. So we did bring multiple school districts in to the task force. And actually we have been able to start a new preschool and after-school program at a school in Estacada.
Well, good for you.
Through connecting with the task force. So that is a huge part of what the grassroots effort is about. Bring everybody to the table. How do we solve these problems together? Because I don't have all the answers. Bridget doesn't have all the answers, but between the two of us, maybe we have like 70%.
And then between the 10 of us, we have a lot more.
Yeah. Well, does anybody else?
Counselor Garlington, just real clarification, is the Gladstone School District participating?
The Gladstone School District has not signed on as a partner yet. They are aware of the efforts and Superintendent Bob Stewart is very supportive of early learning and childcare programming. He just has not had the capacity to be involved at this moment.
Can I ask another quick question? I'm sorry. Isn't this a model, the school district model? Doesn't that go back to the 60s and 70s? Because I do remember being in that model as a child. So isn't that, aren't we kind of revisiting a model that existed in cities back in the early 70s?
Somewhat. There's some complication to that in that we have some slightly different regulation, insurance liability and licensing that did not exist back then. So schools now have to figure out how to fit in with that or vice versa. So it's a little more complicated perhaps, but it is a concept that has been used in the past. Yes.
Sorry for cutting off that, Counselor.
No, you're fine. I was just, you know, Gladstone, John Wetton has an after-school program.
Yes.
But very minimal sponsor, right? And trying to pay folks to come and watch, you know, $16 an hour. You know, there's that. I was, you touched on a little bit, because I didn't see it on there. And if you can remind me, there are restrictions in terms of what this project and funding can go to in terms of the type of childcare. And it was a comment I forgot to mention was that, you know, we're looking at not a nine to five. We're looking at swing shifts and the six to seven, like, you know, you can't find a childcare that's open before seven or closes after six, which doesn't help our tradespeople at all. And so there are restrictions around that, right? With in-home daycares, like we can't just say, oh, we're supportive of this and we're going to start funding our in-home daycares if there's no licensing. Like there's certain restrictions around that. Is that right?
So what we've really been talking about, this goes back to the definition of what makes a childcare desert. So that's a federal designation. That means there's less than one licensed slot for, or for every three children. The reason that we're focused on licensed slots is because it's the easiest for us to track it. Because those folks are all regulated by the state. That means that they have at least that standard of quality across the board, that they have met the health and safety standards to be licensed in the state of Oregon. Also means they've been background checked and all of those sort of like bare minimum qualifications to make sure kiddos are safe. There are lots of really great, what we call license exempt programs out there. And that is more of a model of like friend, family, neighbor care. Mom down the street who stays home with her kiddos and happens to take the three kiddos from next door. There are some really, really lovely people who do that. But it is harder for us to track for one. And two, there are safety concerns with some of them. And it's very limited legally. Those folks are only allowed to take three children or less in addition to their own. So we are really in this effort focused on how do we expand the access of licensed care and make Clackamas County not a childcare desert by the federal definition.
And are the, the after-school programs like John Wetton has, do those numbers in terms of slots, are those calculated in that or is that sort of removed?
They are calculated. We did a lot of work. Even though all of our after-school programs are not licensed, the Oregon After-School Network helped us get all of those numbers so that we could account for what was really here.
Brilliant. Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and I would just say too, that because what works for one family doesn't work for another, we really don't want a one-size-fits-all model or approach to childcare. And so making sure that if someone wants a smaller, more intimate setting within a home versus a, versus a center, those, both of those things should be available. And so I think where we will be kind of not chasing, but that will, that will continue to evolve year to year about like what's available. But again, if we can work our way out of the desert, we're, we're, we're definite, we would definitely be onto something. But again, if we can work our way out of the desert, we're, we're, we're definitely, we would definitely be on to something and creating more solutions for even beyond those children.
Well, thank you so much. Does anybody else have any last minute questions or concerns? Are you okay?
Great presentation.
Yes, it was really, really informative. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. So next step, we have April Heron and Elizabeth White with the Clackamas County Public Health Division Substance Use and Overdose Prevention Initiative. They will present an overview on the county's initiative to address the opioid crisis with the National Opioid Settlement Fund's staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're going to go from one crisis to another. And I appreciate April and Elizabeth coming. I invited them to come to us. As I've kept you aware that Gladstone is participating in the opioid settlement agreement. We are not getting as much money as the county. But tonight, we thought we would have them present to you what they presented to their Board of County Commissioners on how they are going to be spending their money. So that at a future date, the city council may decide to enter into an agreement with Clackamas County to use our funds to leverage what they're doing. So tonight, it's all about just understanding what program they are going to do. So thank you for coming.
All right, are we good? Okay, all right, good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're really happy to be here. My name is April Heron. I am a program planner with the Clackamas County Public Health Division. And I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
So I'm Elizabeth White and I actually work in the same division as Danny who just presented. So we see each other often. And so we both have kind of different lenses. I have the prevention lens around this crisis and April has the public health lens. And together, we are working on a comprehensive approach.
All right, so as Jackie said, we were invited to come talk with you tonight. So we'll be covering just very broadly a little bit on opioid crisis and opioid settlement funding. We have a short presentation. We'll walk through the slides with you and then hopefully at the end, we'll have some time to answer any questions that you might have of us. So here's kind of an overview of what we're going to cover in our presentation. We could probably take three times as long as we have tonight to talk about all of this content. So we did sort of boil it down to give you just the highest level overview. But we'll be providing some information on the scope of the opioid crisis. We'll review the settlement agreement background and talk a little bit about the allowable use of funding. We're really focusing on what are called the core abatement strategies that is part of a national model. And Elizabeth and I will both be covering a little bit about what that model looks like. We'll briefly review the process and framework that we have carved out at the county to help us decide on a model for equitable distribution of our funding. So we have not decided at the county level how the dollars will be spent. We're engaging in a process that we'll sort of review with you tonight. And then we'll end with some possible ways that we can support you, the city of Gladstone.
Yes, thank you for having us today. And we're really excited about having the possibility of investing these settlement funds and prevention, harm reduction, treatment and recovery programs to lift up all of our communities that are impacted by substance use. The losses on individuals, families, public services, others. We just have the opportunity to make some wise investments based on evidence, on community voice. And we can strengthen our communities and prevent the, unfortunately, April's going to share the, the rising numbers of overdose deaths and the harms related to substance use.
All right, so this is data that we share in a lot of the community presentations we do. And it's been shared with our Board of County Commissioners. To just give you a better idea of what we're dealing with at a national level, state level and a local level where we have that data. So this is data from the CDC. It shows that deaths from drug overdoses hit over 100,000 during the pandemic. This includes the number of deaths from April of 2020 through April of 2021. And is the first time the drug overdose deaths hit over six figures in a 12 month period. Overall, the death toll jumped by more than 28 and a half percent compared to the same timeframe the year before. Deaths from synthetic opioids like fentanyl accounted for approximately 64% of the total number of those overdose deaths in that timeframe. And around three fourths of those deaths were from all opioids. So that would be prescription opioids, heroin and fentanyl. And this data shows that there are now more overdose deaths from fentanyl that there were, than there were overdose deaths from all different types of drugs combined in 2016. And that was the first year that Clackamas County really started paying attention to the opioid crisis. And I was asked to start trying to solve the opioid crisis. And my question was, what's an opioid? So I've come a long way. Okay, so moving along to Oregon data here. I'm looking at statewide data on the left. You'll see that Oregon had a more than 45% increase in all drug overdose deaths from April 2020 to April of 2021. And then on the right, we have additional data that came from the National Survey on Drug Use and Health. It's a self-reported data survey that's done every two years. This data was collected in 2020 and paints a pretty disappointing picture for Oregon. Drug and alcohol addiction rates increased significantly in our state during the pandemic. Oregon now ranks second in the entire country for substance use disorders. Meanwhile, we have fallen last in access to treatment. We rank currently first in prescription opioid misuse and we also rank first in methamphetamine use. So moving on to a little bit about what we know about Clackamas County. We are continuing to see higher rates of overdose in the county. Drug related death data comes from our medical examiner, shows 69 confirmed deaths for 2021. Those are still provisional data, so they still could change. All data across the country for 2021 is still subject to change. So far in 2022, we've had nine confirmed deaths. 22 are pending. These go all the way back to February. Our medical examiner's office is quite behind on processing those deaths. And so that puts us at a possible 31 drug fatalities so far this year. The good news is that this number is lower than what we saw the same time last year. And then on the right, you can see that we have seen a 68% increase. If you compare the 2019 bar chart to 2021. And then when looking at the presence of only opioids and the results of people who died from substance abuse, this has increased to 168% in, from 2019 to 2021. So by and large, that is the substance that most people in our county are, are dying from. And then looking at fentanyl, deaths related to fentanyl have increased more than fivefold in that same timeframe. And this data is drug related deaths by location of death in Clackamas County. You can see the zip code for Gladstone had a death rate of 3.4%. This is for the timeframe of 2019 to 2020. We didn't yet have this data mapped for 2021, because as I mentioned, it's still provisional. And so the highest rate of death in anyone's zip code in our county was at 16%. So that kind of gives you an idea where Gladstone ranks. And it is at the lower end when looking at the entire county. And here we see incidents that required EMS transport for opioid calls in the county. And these were for opioid related drug overdose or events where naloxone was administered. They're listed by city on the right. These incidents have increased significantly over the last year compared to 2020. In public health, surveillance has become a big part of what we do. We've invested in a program called First Watch, which allows us to look at real time data that our 911 dispatch operators are sending our EMS folks out to. And so we monitor these data weekly for drug overdoses, looking at emerging drug trends and spikes. And then we're able to share this information regularly with our partners. So you can see where Gladstone ranks in drug related 911 calls. It's a little hard to see, but it's about five in from the right there on the bar chart. From January through August of 13th of this year, there have been 11 calls in Gladstone that meet the case definition. And the majority of these calls include fentanyl, oxycodone, heroin and methamphetamine. And then before I turn it over to Elizabeth, I just wanted to share some key takeaways from an Oregon overdose report on the progress and challenges that were faced in responding to opioid related deaths over the last couple of years. The key takeaways of this report are important for Elizabeth and I and our team as we continue to learn how and where we can have the most impact in our county and where the gaps still remain. We know that many people who overdosed had never touched the healthcare system. So we're really going to need to be looking at other access points to make contact with these folks and make those linkages to care. 70% of people who overdose during this timeframe were not administered naloxone. I will say that is a big part of what we are doing in the county. We've done a really great job of getting naloxone out. We're one of the only county health departments that actually runs a naloxone distribution program out of public health. In addition to our harm reduction, syringe exchange programs in the county, there are two sites. We know that some of the root causes of substance abuse include our lack of community cohesion, mental health issues and absence of basic needs. We're continuing to see a lot of stigma associated with substance use, which prevents people from seeking help. And then there's just ongoing lack of access to shelters, detox facilities and treatment centers. And then many people had reported that they didn't know what community resources exist. So in looking to the future, access to services across all areas of the county are going to remain crucial. And we're hopeful that between both Measure 110 funding, which is another big initiative that we're involved in, plus the opioid settlement funding, we can begin to see some of these issues here addressed.
So we talked a lot about the, the problem and has a, how, as I alluded to earlier, we are engaging in a comprehensive response at the county. And this diagram encapsulates a lot of different ideas. And it can, the idea of the stakeholder groups and all the different strategies is rooted in the idea that communities succeed when they engage all stakeholders and work together to align efforts in addressing substance use through system level change. The outer circles, you see public health, behavioral health, primary, primary care represent the different stakeholder groups. Each group plays a role in moving forward. The inner circle, evidence based strategies around prevention, reducing harm, reducing supply, eliminating stigma, expanding access to care and advancing equity. All of those have lots of different sub-strategies within them, all rooted in evidence. And the core of the circle is our Clackamas Community Alliance, which you are welcome to learn more about and join our county effort to reduce the harms of substance use in our communities. In 2018, the Clackamas County formed an opioid task force to specifically look at opioids. And we have now expanded that and we call ourselves the Clackamas Community Alliance with the acknowledgement that this crisis is expanding beyond opioids into other substances. Our coalition brings together agencies working on substance use prevention to advance a coordinated local response. The idea is strengthening partnerships, the kind of the collective impact model that we use in, in prevention. So marrying those ideas of public health and prevention into a coordinated, comprehensive response.
Okay, so we wanted to share a little bit on just settlement agreement background. We weren't sure on just shared knowledge here. So here's what we know. There's approximately $333 million coming into the state of Oregon as part of both the Johnson and Johnson and distributor settlements. They will have around 18 years to complete payments, or they could go as long as 18 years. And the first payments have begun to arrive already. We know this. The state will retain about 45% of the settlement funds and then 55% will go out to cities and counties who have signed on to the agreement. Clackamas County will receive approximately 13.7 million. And then the cities are receiving lesser amounts, just depending on their population size. We expect payments to be front loaded in the first two to three years. And allocation decisions about these fundings will be made locally. The county attorney fees are going to be paid out of the national settlement funds. They aren't coming directly out of our county allocation. And then we did want to make sure that you know that there will be annual reporting requirements for both counties and cities on how the settlement funds are being spent in each of those jurisdictions.
All right, let's see. I, okay, so we have allowable uses of settlement funding. And I did not put that down in my notes as a slide to do, but we can, we can go through. We don't have to, to read all of them, but these were embedded in that slide that I presented earlier. There's just, like I said, that targeted naloxone distribution is in harm reduction, criminal justice interventions. We have our law enforcement assisted diversion program. We have other great interventions, medication for opioid disorder. We talked about primary prevention, Danny mentioned, and about, you know, all the way from young to old of, you know, implementing activities that will strengthen our families and communities. Linkage to syringe exchange to prevent the harms related to IV drug use, healthcare system interventions, that warm handoff. Because you really need, I mean, when we all go to the doctor, it's like, it's, it's a traumatic experience. And having that kind of warm handoff that helped to, to that care is really important. And it's an evidence based practice. And then we always have to have data collection and research to be able to figure out, like, did our interventions actually do good things? And then of course, treatment during pregnancy and postpartum. Again, it's all linked, like, if you go back to Bridgette and Danny's presentation, you know, we have to have this holistic approach to addressing this problem.
And I'll just add, Exhibit E is a part of the, the master settlement paperwork that I believe everyone should have received. And it includes strategies that go beyond these nine, but these are the core nine evidence based strategies. And I mentioned a national model that we've had the privilege of learning more about. And it comes out of the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. They have a fantastic website that has really become the national model for many states and, and cities and counties across the country. And we are really following that model and do believe in these nine core abatement strategies. I would say that right now across the county, we are in some way doing probably seven of these nine. So there are things that we can expand on across the county. Some of them are being done very well. Some of them have very limited funding. And I, one thing we're looking at too, is just rural areas of our county and culturally specific programming. We're doing a not very good job of getting information out in multiple languages. So that's something that we're thinking about across all these areas as well.
So this slide, if, if you can see it up there, it's a nice blown up version of where the year one settlement allocation funds are broken out. So if you see Clackamas County obviously receives the, the largest chunk and then it's divided across the, the cities. And the use, how OHA uses the metrics of population and, and public health metrics to determine how much funding each city gets. So you can see that for Gladstone, it's roughly $7,000 for the first year allocation. And other cities look about comparable, there's some a little bit larger. Like Casiego has the, the biggest chunk. But if you want to have more information, there's Exhibit A, the State of Oregon subdivision agreement. So if you want to refer to that of how these decisions were made, you can, you can look into that. And the guiding, are you doing the guidance? Oh, all right, go ahead.
Yes, okay, so also as part of this national model that we were learning about, there are five key guiding principles that are really driving the work. And we are choosing to really focus on these two to keep the process moving in a way that is inclusive of, of different people's opinions, that is inclusive of, of the data. And so these are the five principles. Spending money to save lives, using evidence to guide our spending. And part of the process that Elizabeth and I will be rolling out will really lean on blending identification of the gaps in the county, where the gaps are in the county and where the priorities are according to those key evidence based strategies. So learning more about what's being done well and where we have major gaps. So learning more about what's being done well and where we have major gaps and where are those major gaps. Um, investing in youth prevention um is key. Um, there's a lot being done now through measure one ten that will address current addiction problems. And support people in recovery, but there continues to be major gaps when it comes to youth prevention. And we're really working upstream to prevent new addiction rates in the future. Um, I talked a little bit about um equity and that will be a key part of everything we do is focusing on ra- racial equity. And then number five, develop, developing a fair and transparent process. Um, this is part of that process. We're um launching into what we're calling a series of listening sessions. Hearing from key community stakeholders, um, treatment providers, um, schools, all the different folks that um Elizabeth mentioned in, in that model. Um, everybody has a different lens when it comes to how they view substance use. Um, so we want to make sure that we're capturing all those different lenses. Um, we feel our law enforcement partners and our EMS partners are, are really critical to have at the table too. Um, but then at the far end, you have the people who have been directly impacted by an opioid crisis, whether it's a parent, someone who has um was prescribed too much of an opioid. Um, and later fell into a, a path of addiction with an illicit opioid and then found their way into recovery. So all these voices matter and that is part of the process that we're rolling out is, is um hearing from folks to the listening sessions. And then combining that with data um to um hopefully develop this fair and transparent process.
I just wanted to say that since it aligned with what the presentation was before around the, um, some of the numbers around investing in, in youth prevention. That substance use by children often persists into adulthood, approximately fifty percent of all people with substance use disorders start their substance use before age fourteen. Um, and again, that cost, that return on investment, every dollar invested in evidence based substance use prevention programs or results. And a savings of between two and twenty dollars. So the same, I, same investment, return on investment that we just talked about with childcare. Um, and again, the focus on racial equity to make sure that um those who are disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. Um, you know, are that receive additional support through these funding. And then that fair and transparent process, what I forgot to mention previously is that um all the cities who receive the funding do have to report. So if you, if you keep the funding, that reporting has to go to the Department of Justice. So the county has to report and so do the cities on how the settlement funding was spent.
Okay, so we've already talked a little bit about data, but um just a little bit more on that. So um, in public health, we do maintain an opioid and other substance data dashboard. It includes key indicators of opioid harms. Um, some of those were shared with you in earlier slides. But the, the four key things that we're focusing on this time include overdose deaths from our medical examiner. Overdose uh emergency department visits. So we know where people are being transported the most, which particular hospital in the county. And we are working to form some partnerships with that hospital. Um, we're looking at EMS transports for overdose incidents. And then of course, um, the rate of prescriptions that are being written for opioids in our county. And historically, we have had the highest prescribing rate for opioids compared to our neighboring partners in Washington and Multnomah counties. And we've typically been above the state. I think we've have finally maybe lowered that to be more in line with state prescribing rates during COVID. So that's a little bit of a win. Um, so how we're using these data are really to identify populations and areas of the county that have been most impacted. And that will be part of what will help us decide where funding investments should be made.
So April discussed a little bit about kind of the planning framework that we proposed and are hoping to, to move forward. The first concept is using evidence. We've uh talked about that assessment process to look for gaps in prevention, treatment and harm reduction. Um, through this kind of community driven, data informed collaborative approach to spend money to save lives. Um, I discussed uh the kind of that idea of um equity being infused in all the elements of this framework. Um, and then the collaboration, we keep um going back to that, that wheel, you know, again, just describes kind of like how this will succeed is through. Community engagement, collaboration with cities and coalitions and individuals and everybody who's been in fact impacted by substance use disorder. And then that element of transparency, which is key, which in, you know, how government, we are going to have to show, you know, what we've been doing. And just building that trust with our communities, um, I think is really important to show that we're going to make these wise investments. And so we're hoping that we can pull all this information together um and provide some uh ideas how to move forward. And go ahead for the next slide, um, how we're hoping to provide support to you and to other cities. Um, through this assessment findings of data that we're pulling together through listening sessions and through um. A partnership with Comagine who are, is doing some assessment. And also there's an OHSU assessment that is underway too. So we'll provide that information. We'll share evidence based programs and practices to help inform how you would like to move forward with the funding that you will receive. We could also help with, um, if you choose to maximize the investments. So if, you know, the idea of, I think you talk about economies of scale, it's like, um, if you have an activity that we can, you know, partner with so that. You know, we, together we can do more with uh what we have. Um, we can work together on a collaborative investment, however you choose to move forward. Um, if you have a great idea, we can help you move that forward. So we're here to support what makes sense for your community. And my nephew went to John Wetten down the street, so I understand. I know this community a little bit.
Well, thank you so much for all your information. It was definitely informative, that's for sure. Um, Administrator Betts. What, what is, what is it that um we've learned a lot and we have questions up here? But what is it that maybe you are looking for, for from us?
Well, I want to be very clear that the information is staggering. The amount of money that Gladstone is getting is nominal compared to what the county is getting, but we still have a problem. I believe in collaborative partnerships. And I think the best way for Gladstone to utilize these funds is to partner with Clackamas County. Of course, this being a work session, you can't make that decision tonight. I would probably come back in September and ask you if you want us to move forward with an agreement. But I think it's also important that if you guys had any ideas that you wanted to give April or Elizabeth of where that money could be spent to share that with them. Otherwise, this really was just to educate you about the program and we would continue to move forward. And I would pose the question to you at a regular city council meeting, if you would like us to enter into an agreement. Or we would spend the funds on our own, keeping in mind fourteen years to pay this. It's about fifty-two thousand in total for Gladstone.
Okay, all right, questions? Let's see, we're gonna.
Fifty, fifty-two thousand.
Total.
Dollar, well.
Fifty-two thousand in total by the time all of the payments are made.
Oh, so it's not the seven thousand?
It's seven thousand a year, but they have up to fourteen or fourteen years to pay that. We're estimating between seven and eleven years to pay for that. And the county's getting several hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's like leveraging our funds with theirs.
For sure. I was unclear that it was seven a year and not just a one time payment, sorry.
Okay, questions? Counselor Ripley.
Um, I just have one question on the year one abatement allocation. Have you graphed that up against your um local impacts? Of your nine-one-one calls or your deaths? Because if you look at the graph, like the amount of money that like Oswego is getting compared to the, to the amount of nine-one-one calls. They, they're, everything's in virtually proportional. Canby's really close to Lake Oswego, yet Lake Oswego is getting a whole lot more money than Canby is. They're getting four times as much money as Canby when they're looking at the bar graph, they're within a point or two of each other.
I have the same questions. I grew up in Lake Oswego. My parents grew up there and I'm a little confused too about how the, how the funds were, were distributed.
Yeah, decisions unfortunately were made solely on population and we, we absolutely agree with you. Um, we wish they would have included other metrics that would have showed the impacts. Um. That's what I thought would have been done. That's how other funding that we've gotten at the county through CDC has always been based on. Public health metrics like overdose rates and this was strictly on population.
And then the one other question that popped in my head, let me see if I can remember where was that. If we go back to the local impact, that's also not including population. Most, most time when you hear, when you hear something about the population is per hundred thousand people or for whatever it is. And you don't have a hundred thousand people in a lot of these areas. So if you base your graphs off of the language that we use on everything else, how different would they look?
Um, which?
Cause if you, if you, if you went off, if you went off on page two nine and looks like Aurora, Boring, Estacada, they're all down around five or six. But if you look at the population of those towns, there's not that many people. If you compare that to Milwaukee with, with that many nine-one-one calls. It's, you're going to get two different pictures because you, you're not, the graph isn't comparing apples to apples. So I, I, I think it'd be interesting to see what it actually was per capita on something like that and actually have, have graphs overlaying other graphs. So you can see the proportionality to stuff and if something's getting, getting missed, it's easy to miss stuff when you start dealing with a lot of cities and a lot of different numbers.
I completely agree and we do have one chart. We didn't include it here. Like I said, we could have taken three times as long. But it does actually overlay those four indicators that I mentioned when it looks at emergency department visits, EMS. Overdose fatalities. And then the fourth one is um a set of data that we're moving away from now. But it was based on law enforcement responses to overdose and it, it goes through a program called OD MAP. But we have done what you're suggesting is overlay them to see all of the impacts in one area. I'm happy to share that later on if you want me to follow up with that.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay.
I was just wondering, is this the way my, I thinker thinks?
Thank you. Um, Counselor Tracy.
So I appreciate Counselor Ripley, um, kind of looking at the obvious and bringing it up. I appreciate your answer, but. Um, I, I have a real problem with what I'm looking at on the pie chart and here's why. Um, I mean, this, this is an assumption, so it's hypothetical, obviously. I'm going to guess to the investment portfolios of some of the Lake Oswego folks are. As heavy as it could be in pharmaceuticals during the time that this was all the rage, because I also did follow the, the Bloomberg Business News. And a lot of folks were enticed into invite investing into Johnson and Johnson. Knowing full well that Purdue's privately owned, I don't think you have an investment opportunity there, but with Johnson and Johnson. I mean, it's ironic to me that that's the, the money allocations are based on population. And you're not even looking at the demographics for the people who are actually sick. Um, I personally find this offensive. Uh, you can carry that back to whomever you need to talk to from the city council or who's going to put it on the record. But I appreciate um Counselor Ripley bringing it up because I, I, I was looking at it and just going. I'm, I'm not really seeing this, am I? But I am. That aside, I think, you know, we're going to have to do the best we can. Um, some, some very prominent families in this country, I think, have all but destroyed at the street level. The country for profit. Um, they have to pay a certain amount of money, but it's not going to break the bank, obviously. But it does seem just the optics of, you know, and I'm not picking on the city, but just the optics of Lake Oswego having that amount and not having an explanation. Really coming back to elected officials like ourselves about really why. Where again, I, I would bet those investment portfolios are heavier on pharmaceuticals during the crisis than any portfolio in Gladstone. And I think somebody, somebody who made that decision needs to think about that for a moment.
I, yeah, I agree. I have the unique perspective of, you know, I mean, unlike us, we go often. Um, but I think we, um, like Bridgette was talking earlier, kind of trying to focus back on kind of the opportunities that we do have. And so that's part of why I put that model together of like, hey, you know, like the, with the childcare for all, we work together. Maybe, you know, we can come up with.
And I understand, I understand that. I don't think I wouldn't take anything away and sure, certainly somebody from Lake Oswego is going to be angry with my comments, but the optics of it.
Parents wouldn't, so just let, let.
Well, optics are there, right? And so I guess it goes back to the question, my, my other question, which is, do we have a demographic for somebody? Who's suffering from these addiction illnesses? And if we do, are those demographics broken into a different compartment? Cause that, that's what I'm hearing. And, and, and I have done some research on this is that the demographic could be anywhere. It goes all over the place, right? From the person who may have injured themselves skiing, went to the doctor, had, you know, a knee injury. And as you said, we're not, not necessarily over prescribed, but prescribed opiates and it just worked and they went through the process to, you know, de-listed street demographic, right? So I guess that's, I haven't seen that and I, I, that would. If you looked at the demographic and then had this pie chart in front of you, there may be some rhyme or reason to it. I just arbitrary decisions about population.
Yeah.
That's, that, that's far, you're the public health expert. That's, that, that to me is far from really serving the equity of the public.
I mean, it's, yeah, the demographic is everywhere, but absolutely there are some pockets of the county that have been hardest hit. Um, we know where those are and I would say Gladstone is wedged in between those two areas. I mean, just looking at where the overdose rates are occurring, you'll see, you know, our North Clackamas, Milwaukee area and Oregon city. Have by and large always led the way for overdose rates. They are the hardest hit. But Gladstone is very close in between those areas. Um, so I would say that and, and we completely agree about the distribution of funds. I mean, even looking at the county allocation, thirteen point seven million over eighteen years. We've got our work cut out for us because it is not going to go far. And to try to spread it across the continuum where you're not only preventing future addiction rates, but responding to. The current mess we're in with fentanyl and people deliberately seeking out fentanyl and it's just flooding our country coming in across the border. And then trying to help people who are in recovery, stay in recovery amidst, you know. Some of the, the other crises that we're seeing. So. It's going to be very challenging to distribute that funding equitably across that continuum, but also across the county. When we want to do it in a way that the areas that have the biggest gaps, that where those gaps are being addressed.
And I wanted to just finish up. I'm, I don't want to take any more time, but I, I do want to ask the question about naloxone. Cause I had an experience here a couple of weeks ago with somebody who was overdosing on the street. And I was with a security guard who happened to arrive and my son and I arrived and, and this gentleman looked like he was, he was going to expire. But as soon as I asked the security guard within earshot of the gentleman if he had any naloxone on him, this guy perked right up and said, no, 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 I'm okay, I'm okay. I mean, needle in his arm. So this stuff works for these folks, right? It, it does reverse because it.
I've got some in my purse.
Okay, it stops the receptors. And I know that there was a program in Happy Valley, I think, a couple of weeks ago where they were trying to get folks to come and train and volunteer to, to get it. Is that suggested?
Yeah, we're doing those trainings all the time. In fact, um, we're just getting ready to launch um a, a tri-county harm reduction two-part training. Um, coming up in September. Um, but we get requests for naloxone trainings and naloxone kits several times a month. I mean, they, they've really just increased. Everybody wants them. We're hearing from security guards. The Clackamas Town Center security guards have it. Um, we try to keep our law enforcement ages, agencies stocked up. But there are free resources for law enforcement. Um, there are also free resources for schools. Um, I will say the school districts have also been one of our latest um. Um, groups that we're trying to get them to just stock it in the first aid kits because with what we're seeing, I think, you know, it'd be a liability to have a, a kiddo, have an overdose on campus. Or even a parent or someone who's there for a sporting event and not have it. So um, there's a lot of work being done with naloxone.
Great. I appreciate your presentation and I appreciate you understanding why we might zero in on the pie chart.
I know, well, I, I was the one who came up with the pie chart just in, so it was my fault. But again, having that unique perspective of growing up here, I, I could see where it'd be a little alarming.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for this presentation. Um, I don't mean to continue down the Lake Oswego path. Um, but I echo both of their statements as it was the first thing that I had on my notes. Um, and I know that you had mentioned that this was based off of population, you know, but just doing the quick math. And seeing the difference, the vast difference between Lake Oswego is a forty-three thousand dollars at thirty-nine, about thirty-nine thousand people. Oregon City has about thirty-seven thousand people and only seventeen thousand dollars go to them. So I have to believe that there were some other metrics that were involved.
Um, if you go to exhibit, so um I can send this to you later.
Okay.
Exhibit A and the state of Oregon subdivision agreement. And so that's, so it sounds like it's.
I actually double checked this. Um, OHA just launched an opioid settlement website for the state of Oregon and I, that's where I took the information directly off.
That's what I got that.
And it does. And it does come from exhibit A. I also thought there were public health metrics included in the calculation, but it doesn't reference those. So, um, and I was told directly by an OHA staff, it was based on population only.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. Got that from the website.
No worries. You know, and, and these comments, I don't think from any of us are directly to you too. Or at least I'll just speak for myself. Um, yeah. I mean, I think, um, it feels a little awful to say that we're equity minded here. When the graph is showing us the percentages of high, you know, drug related deaths and the majority of the money is not going to those sections.
Right.
Um, and it's in fact, going to one of the lowest cities around. Um, so I echo all of the things I won't continue to bash Lake Oswego. My apologies if you ever watch this. But it, it is, it is not, it is not fair and it is not equitable based off on the goals that it is said to be here. Um, and so if there is anything that we can do to sort of push this, if there is an opportunity, whether the council can all agree on a letter or whatnot, um, I think I would be interested in looking at that. Uh, and going into the data part, I was curious how deep the data goes. Um, you know, does it talk about age? Does it talk about income? Does it talk about are they a veteran, retired, senior? Um, does it go that, that deep so that we know that it is the youth that this is affecting the most in Gladstone or seniors or veterans or?
Well, we have, or it just depends on the data source. So if you're asking about fatality data, that information, we do have age, we do have sex. We have very limited race and ethnicity data, which is something that we've been trying to really get our hands on for years, but it's, it's not an accurate collection of data that's happening from the medical examiner. So unless it's a very complicated process, but until we get that potentially from a family member that would be put on a vital statistics report, it's just a guess as to what the medical examiner thinks the race and ethnicity is. So to answer your question, we mostly have, we have limited demographic data by source. We do know that in terms of youth fatalities, they are the lowest demographic that is, has been hit in, in the state and in our county. I think you're asking for kind of this layered kind of contextual information and the blueprint that's online, you could kind of do some filters. But the, but you saw the different like strategies, it's data. That's, I mean,
Right.
We're missing, you know, all that, that infrastructure to be able to tell, to say, you know, like answer your questions. So that's part of what the settlement funding.
Right.
Go to.
Maybe Lake Oswego can help pay for that capacity. Yeah. Cause I mean, it, I'm very curious in, um, you know, like previous arrests, um, how, you know, if that's, I saw that in, you know, one of the options of expanding those resources. When we get arrested, you, you get arrested and, and we're going to, you know, now we have that warm handoff and how, you know, you can heal. I'm curious of that sort of granular data in, in these deaths and seeing like, could we have prevented this? Where did this come from? Did this come from income? Did this come from living in poverty? Cause based off on, you know, the map even here, the higher, you know, the more affluent areas have looking to be the lowest amount of related deaths. And sort of the higher ones maybe are in that like eighty second corridor. And so really looking at that information is really important to me so that I can make a decision like, okay, it's not our youth that is most impacted. They are impacted, but not most. How can we push these funds towards certain people? Um, it's sort of what I was looking at. Um, and the last, it's like Lake Oswego. The last, so the other question I had, so on the last, so two dash thirty-five, I was just curious. So the opioid related emergency department visits twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Can, can you speak on why? I mean, I have my assumptions as to why there's just such a drastic increase September to December. And then it seemingly just dips back down in January. It's, uh, it's off the website. So it's this guy here.
Okay. Okay. Yes. So that is a supplemental, um, data sheet that we, so that wasn't included in the presentation.
No, here. You can look, I just am curious, is, is there really like statistics that you're into the winter months? Like it's depression is heavier. There's like more chance of opioid use based off on the graph. It just skyrockets in the last quarter of the year.
Um, it's possible. Um, we would almost need to compare trends over years for a particular season to see if there were, you know, some similarities in that data. And yeah. I don't know. My, my guess is that it's how people use drugs that maybe they're more out, you know, like
Sure.
Side more.
Right.
They're around other people that can call in to, you know, I mean, we don't know the number of overdoses, like so many overdoses happen that are never reported.
Right, right.
True scope of what actually is.
It's also during the pandemic.
Well, yeah, I mean, there were all, I think there were four years, yeah, four years of data in that and they all kind of go right up. Where I was going with it, it was in terms, again, how we use our funds. If we decide to use ourselves, if there's campaigns, like media campaigns that we can utilize the money for started in September because clearly based off on this graph, it's about to be an increase.
What I will say is there is talk right now, there's a lot of good things on the horizon. I will say that. Um, measure one ten is bringing some pretty good things into the county. Those are all still being decided, but it's really going to boost harm reduction, expansion of those services that are needed. It's one of my goals to get those into areas of the county that we don't have it right now. Syringe exchanges at the Clackamas Service Center, which is on the border of, you know, Multnomah and Clackamas County and then in Oregon city. But as we know, populations who are accessing those services are often on foot. And so, um, you know, that's one thing that will be expanded. We know we've got some detox beds coming into the county, which is something that we currently don't have. And we know that there will be an expansion of what's called intensive outpatient, which basically allows someone to live in a house at no cost and go through treatment. Um, and they don't have to work. It's, it's paid for as part of that model. So thanks to measure one ten, we have about five more of those houses coming into the county. We currently have one. So part of our process is to capture where those investments are being made so that we don't duplicate those investments with settlement funding. But we can, um, you know, either expand those things to other areas of the county or address things that aren't being done at all. But just going back to the ED data, I, we have not picked up on any particular seasonal trends with overdose. It's, it's often completely random, especially like with the EMS, um, nine one one calls. That's, that's really what we have access to on a real time basis. And for the last several weeks, we've hovered right around ten for the county, but every once in a while we'll get a spike that we would consider to be in like the fifteen to eighteen range. And so it tells us something, something was going on. Um, and I think we're the only county that has access to that real time system. I mean, it, it was a great investment because it allows us to, when we see something's going on, um, notify our law enforcement and EMS partners across the county that there could be a bad batch of something coming through. So be aware. So we do have some good things going for us. We didn't mean to paint a completely doom and gloom picture, but there's definitely a lot of work to be done.
Sure.
Yeah, there are, um, just trying to think of a positive thing. The law enforcement assisted diversion program, which, um, I'm transition, I was project manager, now transitioning management of that is going to expand. So there's opportunities if Gladstone wants to participate, um, get law enforcement to come to the, to the table and, you know, contribute some resources to help that effort. That is a possibility to, um, Milwaukee as an investment in Oregon city into that program. So there's lots of, lots of different ways to leverage, you know, different opportunities.
Yeah. And just so I heard you correctly, we have zero detox beds in all of Clackamas County.
We have one facility, but yeah, it's, it's private insurance. And so currently, um, folks have to go into Hooper into Portland. That is very, um, difficult to access. You have to get there about six in the morning, wait in line. Usually if you don't get in within three hours, you're not getting in for the day. Um, the other one, um, that folks are having to access is, it's a twenty-four seven walk-in in Vancouver. So. Aren't they going to, I thought that was on the table, but I'm not, not sure. This one's twenty-four seven. So you can literally walk in, but it, it just shows how far people are actually having to go to get into detox. And as we know, with people who have an addiction, you have to get them in right then, when they decide they want it. That whole warm handoff, the thing that we talked about is really important. And we do, we do, you mentioned justice, um, related interventions, and we do have some great work happening there too. We have a program, um, that sends both a case manager and peer recovery mentor into the jail weekly. They're able to connect with folks, um, and help transition them out as they're coming out of jail. I mean, you might've also heard the county transition centers opening back up, if you remember what that is. So that is going to be a hub, a one stop shop hub of resources for folks coming out of jail. So, um, that's another thing our county has going for us is some really great cross systems collaboration going. Um, and there are other counties looking to us at, at what we're doing. So more funding will equal more opportunity to grow that work.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Uh, Counselor Alexander.
Quick and right to the point. Where the money's going, I mean, I've dropped people off at Hooper. I've been to two memorial services in the last month. One of them was for an eighteen year old Saturday at Clackamas Park from Gladstone who didn't have a place to go, ended up staying with people that gave her fentanyl. Putting money to disseminate a web-based training curriculum. I don't think that would have helped her. Funding media campaigns to prevent opioid use. I don't think that would have helped her. So I, I, I'm going through here and I marked all the things that are good and bad and, um, increased distribution for the people who need the services, but also give them housing. And that's the biggest thing. She had nowhere to go. You know, that's what she didn't. That's what her parents told me at the, at the memorial. You need the majority of the money, I believe, needs to go to mental health, housing, and then back here where you say reduce the supply. And that's, that's what I think those are. I, I've seen it for a lot of years. And I think those three things were the majority of the money will help the people the most, not. I mean, like you have one in here for first responders. They've already, they're already trained. They're already doing this. Why would you throw more money to them or more counselors? You understand what I'm saying?
Is that exhibit E you're referring to? Yeah. And, um, as I mentioned, exhibit E has lots and lots of ideas. Some of them fall into more of the promising practices. The ones that we highlighted in one of our slides are sort of the nine core, where you're really going to get the most bang for your buck. And like we said, there are things that we're mostly already doing. There's only a couple of things. Um, like the postpartum care for women, that's more on the clinical side. That's a much bigger lift, but, um, we completely agree with you. There are some places where it's just not worth.
So didn't even, I like with, um, he said about, he saw the, um, person when they men- mentioned, no, I, I don't, I call it Narcan.
Yeah.
Cause that's what they, that's what I've always heard it as. But, um, I've taken people that have overdosed and the minute they gave them the Narcan, they yelled at the doctor and were mad because they took their highway, you know? So I've seen that too. And the criminal justice interventions, I mean, what, what is that? They tell you, I don't do it. We kept, don't do it anymore. You know? Those people go right back out and do it and how early. So I, I think the housing, I'm just mental health, housing and reduce supply. There you go. That's all. Thanks for your presentation.
No, unfortunately, uh, so one of the projects I work on is, um, with the unit that's, uh, received the supportive housing services from that metro tax. And so they're really, they're hiring people, they're going to do street outreach. They're going to do, you know, giving vouchers, uh, for, you know, the hotels. So money is coming to Clackamas and they're, they're kicking it out. So
Yeah, because.
They're busy. I, I talked to someone today and they're, they're really busy, but they're scaling, they're scaling up to get that money out to people who need it.
Cause I've taken people to Hooper and said, they're like you said, and if they're not in line, they don't get put in that morning, they're, they're right back out using it. And that's just how it works.
That's the whole word. The, I go back to that warm handoff. That's the.
Well, I've also seen them go in there and two days later they're going, go to the parking lot on Burnside right there and throw me up. You know what I mean? It's, so I don't know how, how good those treatment centers are working or, you know, so either, but, but they're better than nothing. But we don't, I don't know if anyone's aware here that we have a methadone clinic. You, you know where that is across from Buster's behind that thing there right next to the boat. Coda, yeah, it's been there for a long time and I didn't know that. A lot of people didn't. And then I found out and a lot of people didn't want it, but it got to be here anyway. And I think, is that the only one in Clackamas County? Cause all the rest have been, I know. Delta and all those are down in Portland and, but yeah, we have no detox anywhere in Clackamas County for anyone to go to help. It's like these two people, they had nowhere to go, they said.
Yeah.
And one went off their anti-anxiety and then bam, it was self-medicate.
If we invested more, you know, return on investment, we're probably good, right?
Counselor Todd.
Thank you. A lot of questions have been answered, but, um, when I'm looking at the local impact and there's the sixteen percent, is that just unincorporated North Clackamas is that, it's not Happy Valley, correct? The sixteen.
About that, that one right there. The sixteen percent would be, it's really hard to tell on this version I have, but it looks like it's part of the North Clackamas area, um, whatever that zip code is, was zip code level data. So it's, I'm sorry, I can't tell you which one it, when it is, but it's part of North Clackamas.
North Clackamas is that incorporated area. Yeah. I guess I'm just, um, my only thoughts on this, and I don't know if you care, but is that it, we're getting such a small amount. What could we conceivably do with that with our small city, our small staff, our overloaded staff? And looking through the nine core abatement approaches, I mean, there's really Narcan, but you said that, um, fire and school districts already have access to their own abilities to get that. And then like, I'm looking at everything else and I'm going, okay, we expanded certain services and, and how would you, you know, implement that on a level that would make the money that we have work? And so just when I'm looking through this, it seems like we have to partner because what could Gladstone specifically do for themselves with that little money? And I won't go into the lap, that little thing, but, um, that's just my thought on it. That out of those nine abatement issues, I mean, there wouldn't be anything that we could implement on our, our own.
I know. Unfortunately, the leveraging resources, either with your own city dollars that you may be able to piece something together, or whether it's with the county is probably the best option. But I would also encourage you, if, if you do want to leverage it with the county to maybe participate in conversations and have a voice at the table. So you can represent what you want for Gladstone, whether it's expanded harm reduction, whether it's, you know, a, a law enforcement officer or EMS who could help make those warm handoffs. There are options available. Again, we only had so much time to go into some of the things happening right now, but it would give you an opportunity to learn more about what is happening in the county and how folks are working together and where Gladstone might fit into that.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're, you know, like I'm in prevention and, you know, we may, the county may decide to make investments and like we have this great program called Prevent Now, which is, wasn't Gladstone, but unfortunately we lost funding for that. And that provides after school support for middle schoolers for, you know, during that pro-social time. You know, that helps them, you know, provide those life skills, uh, so that they're more successful. And so, you know, maybe those funds will be used for that. And maybe Gladstone, you know, puts that contribution, it might go towards something like that type of effort. So there's lots of different ways to use those, those funds that we have, we haven't decided yet. So that's where you, you're kind of seeing this ambiguous, like what do we do? So we're kind of narrowing down to see what, what it is that we can do. And these listening sessions, which you're invited to attend as well as where we're going to hear. What do people want? What are your priorities? Where do you want these funds invested? Yeah, we'll be sure to share the link with Jackie when those are scheduled and it'll be registered by registration.
I only have, I just have two questions. One, when you talk about a death in Gladstone, is that because you've pulled the driver's license out of somebody's pocket and you know that they're a Gladstone resident, or they just happened to die in our zip code?
They just happened to die in your zip code.
Okay.
So you could have Gladstone residents that.
Exactly. Okay. And then, um, if it was up to me, we would give the money to childcare for all, because I believe that everything starts when they're really little. Otherwise, if you could just have programs that go in and scream at these high school kids and tell them what a dumb idea this is, that would be really great. And $7,000, yes. $7,000 doesn't pay for barely two months of, um, I, I, I mean, if somebody was going to into an addiction center, it's twenty-five hundred to $5,000 a month and are very small measly amount of money. Uh, we, I mean, we would probably do it no justice. So that's where I'm coming from with that. I want to thank you for all your information. It, I, I would have to say, when you said you didn't know what this was, I'm a little bit closer to you than Counselor Tracy over here, who is, has, you know, made himself knowledgeable about it. So thank you for all the information. We do appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks for having us. And we're happy to come back at and re-present any information. Um, Jackie mentioned you might be making decisions in September. So if you'd like any updates on what we've done in that timeframe, just let us know.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
You are solving all the world's problems tonight. Congratulations.
With $7,000. Exactly. So thank. Exactly. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
I do have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quick, well, not for them. I guess for administrator beds. Is it something that we should talk about, about advocating to the county about getting more money? I just am curious.
No, the settlement agreement is not negotiable. And that involved like 10 counties, 10 attorneys. So the incentive model is, yeah, it's done. That's all we're getting. Where should we spend that money? We have a little bit of time to talk about that as well. Because it will take some time to put an IGA together with the county. And I don't know if any of the other cities in Clackamas County, but yeah, I thought I was.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call on that?
We'll do a roll call. Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for the evening.